Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the work session of July 22, 2024. Lisa, do you want to take the roll call, please?
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Sarda. Hanoff.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Mojer.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Shum. City manager Leon.
Here.
City attorney Denherter.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sarda did indicate he will be running late, but he will be here. Mayor Shum will not be here. So in absence of a mayor, I would look for a motion for a mayor to proceed over the work session.
I would move Stephanie Mojer being mayor pro temp.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Does your motion include that nomination cease and we cast a unanimous ballot?
Sure.
Are you amenable to that amendment? Okay. I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side. Okay, we'll let Mayor Pro Tem Mojer take on public appearances while I go to the podium. All right, now's the time for public appearances. Is there anybody that wishes to appear in front of the commission this evening in our work session on something that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing no movement, then we will move on to our discussion for the work session tonight. It sounds like we've got quite a bit to get through, so I'll turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, honorable mayor members of the commission and folks in the public listening. One of the things that Lisa and I have tried to be a little more aggressive on here is updating our code of ordinances. So we're working through the licenses, so you'll see more on that as we go forward throughout the year. We'll be working with Dave Mingo in concert with the comprehensive plan. If there's any subdivision changes or things in that code that we need to update later on, and that'll probably go into the following year. But one of the things that we want to take on is discussion of chapter two, which is our administrative code. It has not been updated, at least since I've been here. So we think it's prudent that every five or 10 years, in this case, a little more, we take a look at it. And we think that there's some things that need to be omitted, some things that maybe could be updated or changed, and some things that we just want your feedback on. There's also some things that we're not necessarily, as a staff, we don't care either way, we just want to know what you guys want to do. So I'm going to point out the items in the code that we want to talk to you about, and if there's others in that chapter, we can do that as well. So this basically outlines our administrative structure and talks about sort of the basics of the city commission, our boards and committees, all those types of things. The first thing that we want to talk about is precincts. They're outlined in section 2.4. We're recommending that we omit those. You know that we don't use precincts. I don't know at one time why they may have, if they voted by precincts, but at one point, it was decided that all commissioners would serve at large. The feedback we've always gotten as a staff is that's a good thing because you're not just interested in your area town, and I'm not just interested in the park by my house, but I'm interested in representing the whole community. So unless you guys think differently, we think that can be omitted. Section 2.5 is the approval of expenditures involving $5,000 or more. So this is a check and balance that commission's staff. We have always tried to bring forward those in the capital improvement plan. So you're either approving, oftentimes even if you've approved them in the capital improvement plan, we bring a bid forward for, you know, a piece of equipment or something like that, even though you've already approved the budget. $5,000 is not a lot of money when it comes to a lot of the things we purchase. So we're questioning, do you want to change that to a higher amount? Do you want us to see what other communities are doing? And we have to ask Ross as well if the statute allows us to do that, and I think it does.
Okay, so quick point of clarification. Every dollar the city spends gets tossed into our approval of warrants. So technically, the commission approves everything. We have a very detailed set of warrants compared to what many other communities do. And so it isn't a question of whether it will come before you for approval. It's just at what point does practicality kick in so that every time we're writing a check, we don't have an agenda item for you guys to discuss and approve the merits? You know, there's a certain amount of ordinary business anymore, and the worse that inflation gets, the more things that used to be ordinary business now may cross that threshold and require some amount of in-depth discussion by this board. So it's sort of how cluttered do you want your agendas, or how deep into the minutia do you guys want to do, go to do the city's business, understanding that you have some discretion in setting an appropriate limit? And right now, it's 5,000 and 7,000 respectively. It's 5,000 for contracts involving procurement or construction, and then 7,000 for contracts involving municipal utilities, essentially in that nature. I think we'd probably want to adjust the language anyway and just kind of pick an amount across the board. So it's just contracts over X should have an agenda item and be discussed, and below that, they can be administratively approved, subject to the commission's approval of warrants, I think is a more practical overlay, and is also more in line with modern business of operating a city.
Well, and also that they're approved already in the budget. So if it isn't something that's in the budget, we would bring it forward, you know, regardless. Now, there are some things like professional services that sometimes run over $5,000, and we have budgetary authority to make those approvals. But this is a check and balance, and it's, you know, you might not have an answer tonight, or you may be want to discuss that and throw out some ideas, and we can come up with a recommendation. Because we can't just think about us today and how we function. We could be different people in our chairs, and so we have to think about that as well.
Do we have any idea what other cities are doing?
I don't know, other than I know some cities don't have this. If it's approved in the budget, in the minutes they are confident in moving forward. Now, Yankton, since I've been here, we've always put those things on. And I think that 5,000 is low. We can certainly go through other city codes, first-class cities, and see if they have something in the code, in their codes, if you'd like. But I don't know what exact numbers they would have.
It'd be interesting seeing what some of the other Class A cities are doing.
So one thing to point out in terms of, you know, it doesn't necessarily go to what other committees are doing. It's just the obligations of statute just simply require the city to approve all warrants, and the city manager can enter into contracts with expenditures under $200 without getting prior authority, but all expenditures need to be approved by the commission through the warrants process. And technically, approval of the warrants is like a ratification or an acceptance of whatever the circumstances were that incurred that obligation. I don't think that's the right way to do all expenses, of course, but that's, that is the minimum. And then there's bidding rules for thresholds over X amount, and that depends on what it is we're buying. If it's, you know, contracts for construction or procurement of equipment, things of that nature.
I think what we can do when we bring forward a draft for first reading, we can, if we have a, an expenditure amount that other cities have used, or we have a range, we can put that in, and then at that time, you guys can make a decision.
So, Amy, to make language easy, if I'm understanding you correctly, in essence, the way that we have this published now, we're approving the same expense twice, in essence, because we would have it, excuse me, in a budget meeting, which we said, yeah, go ahead, because we approved the budget, and then it's coming back in front of the city commission to say, yep, we still mean it? We still say, yeah, go ahead and buy it?
So, and that's a little bit redundant in some things, and if it's a, you know, if it's a mower, you know, any more mowers can be up to $30,000, so maybe that's not a good example. But if it's a small piece of equipment, that seems foolish. You know, if it's a motor grater, and we're in a tight budget year, you guys might want to say, eh, let's, no, we don't want to prove out, we want to hold off because we want to kind of see where our sales tax is, or, you know. So I do understand why, why some expenditures, you know, commissions or elected officials do want to see, even though they've approved. It's pretty hard to know, for example, in July, when you'll get presented the budget, late July or August, what financial condition we're going to be in in February. So I understand why it's there. I think it's low in terms of the dollar amount anymore.
When we approve the claims, have some of those checks already gone out, or do they not go out until we approve the claims?
Some of them do go out already. Well, the first packet of every month includes manual checks. So those were checks that had been pre-approved. A lot of those, you know, are like DOT for title and registration. A lot of those are also what you do approve for your final contract, and you authorize the finance officer to issue a manual final check. So those are in that report. And then there's also certain ACH payments as well regarding payroll liabilities that we do pay.
So if you were to not approve the warrants for some reason, we would have to go back to the vendor and tell him to stop payment?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa. When that's usually happening, it's purchasing supplies. You got, you got the P card, and you go proactively, you go buy what you need for your department. That's a budgeted expense, retail-type purchases, or we have contracts that this commission has approved that we are in the process of just carrying out. It's kind of the ministerial functions of the job. It's not new contract approvals.
That's correct. Yes, everything via ACH or via manual check is already pre-approved. It's budgeted for, definitely.
Yeah. And then a point of clarification, such a mixed bag, because finance is so complicated. That's why we've got pages and pages of budget. But it's not always duplication when we are approving the warrants on the backside and also approving the contract on the front side. In many instances, you have to, you know, we may have budgeted for it back at budget time, but it's still an estimated expense. So we've got an expense. Now we have, you know, a bid or an estimate from a contractor, and we have the contract that we're approving, you know. So it's, it's not always just it's budgeted, we can spend, but in some cases, that's true.
Right. And if it's under the bid amount, we may have budgeted a certain dollar amount, and now we have a quote from a contractor or a number of contractors, and we're bringing forward the actual cost of that quote. So, well, we can see what other cities are doing here and see if there is any, I don't know, standard amount. But I think we have to come up with something that's reasonable, or we can continue on as, as, as we are. Other input on that? Otherwise, we'll move to 231, which I think is something that we'll have a little bit of discussion on. This was brought forward to me a number of years ago, discussing whether or not we, we as a community, you as a commission, would like to change your regular meeting time. I do know we are the only city commission, first-class city now, at least among those researched, because Vermillion had an intern to research them, that us and Vermillion are the only ones meeting at 7:00. So most are meeting at 5:30, some are meeting at 6:00. I don't know that that matters. City of Volga is meeting at 5:30 on one Monday and noon another Monday. That's necessarily something I recommend, but just what's out there. So I have had our intern do a little research this year about meeting length of time. And this year, we've been a little lower in sort of average meeting time, but over the course of the last five years, we've increasingly gone up in the length of our meeting. Now, does length of our meetings matter? Not really. You guys can talk all night long if you want to talk all night long. However, I personally noticed that after a couple hours, we all get a little bit, you know, it's getting to be 9:00, and we all busy lives. An earlier timeframe may work okay, but it's a quick turnaround if you work until 5:00, and then you got to get, you know, something to eat or kids dropped off or whatever. So I understand that as well. Staff is interested in an earlier meeting time. They think that it would be a little more seamless. So it's whatever you would like to do. The, we talked about the second and fourth versus the first and third. We are, I think, the only city that's first and third. Why that came about, I'd hope maybe Charlie's here to tell us.
You mean second and fourth?
Excuse me, second and fourth, and others are first and third. Why we are on a different Monday cycle, I don't know. I don't think it matters. It matters for city managers, one, one meeting out of the year. So it's not a big hardship for me. That might be more confusing to the public than just changing the time. You know, you think about transparency and being accessible to the community, choosing your meeting time. My experience is that if somebody has an issue that's important enough, they'll be there. You know, is it, I don't think it's necessarily fair to put them during working hours, but changing the time to meet 30 or 7:30 or 7:00 or what have you, maybe, may have some benefit. The other thing that could happen is you could try a different meeting time for a year. You can always amend your ordinance if it's not working for the people, for the public, for conflicting things from media, some like that, because they can get their story done sooner. And one said, well, now what if we run into the school board? But typically, I think we're opposite the school board, but we do have special meetings. And maybe that's why the city commission at that time set the second, set it for second and fourth, because I think school board is regularly the first and third. And they're a different time than us, and maybe that's why they set it at the different, at the different time, so people could go to both meetings. And I don't know if you guys go to both meetings, if you come from the school board to come here, but...
The second and fourth works better. I think I have some boards that meet on the first and third Monday, like the Park Board, for instance, the third Monday. So as far as the second and fourth versus first and third, I don't know if anybody else has any conflicts like that, but to the start time, to me, there's a big difference between 5:30 and 6:00. And for the record, many years ago, they started them at 7:30, and then they went to 7:00, which it's been for a long time. But to me, there's a big difference between 5:30 and 6:00. And I base that on the fact that I have a couple of 5:30 meetings, and I always seem to be five minutes late, because, you know, getting out of the office and whatever, getting a bite to eat, maybe. And I think 6:00 is definitely a better time for the public to have a chance to attend, as far as you said about transparency and accessibility. So I'm just throwing that out there. 6:00 would be my preference if we're going to go earlier.
That's the other point, too, about the board meetings that Commissioner Hanoff is making. If we would change Mondays, we'd have to probably make some adjustments on the board meetings, because you guys are all liaisons to different boards and not. So, so it would be easier to keep the Monday cycle as is.
Would we be doing work, so work sessions? So a 6:00 would make work session at 5:00? Or how would that work?
It's whatever you guys want to do. So the work sessions are not addressed in this code, and we didn't put them in the code because when they started, we started them kind of on a trial basis, and then we never stopped doing them. We could do a couple different things. So there's communities, Brookings and Vermillion, for example, have their work sessions at noon. Some of their council can make it, some cannot. They're videotaped, just like this one is tonight, and commissioners or counselors that can't make it offer feedback. Nothing's ever voted on in a work session, so that's an option. You could do it on another Monday if you felt like 5:00 was too early. You could do it at 5:00. I think what happens with work sessions is there's times when we really need them, when there's things to talk about. Like, I can't have a full discussion with the full commission like this often, but there's also times where we're coming up with, okay, we got to come up with a work session topic, and we're scrambling. And you guys have been good about canceling them if we don't really need them. We could also, starting earlier, gives us an opportunity to maybe have a longer discussion about an item without going later into the evening. Could see how that goes. I think we're always going to need work sessions for things like budget, but it's, it's completely up to you.
I think, good point you make there, Amy, because I know it hasn't always happened, but there's been times we've had to cut the work session off and, and stop so that we can start the city commission meeting on time. It hasn't, doesn't happen all the time with work sessions. But it made me think of that when you brought that up, that maybe looking at doing a work session like at a noon at some point, while I know not everybody can make it, just as we have tonight, the fact that we would record them, I think allows people to do that. I, I would be interested in more than that, because, and again, if you offered at noon, and somebody has to get back to work at 1:00 and didn't get a chance to participate or something, I get that. But I think that's part of the problem of doing them before an actual commission meeting, because if we don't get through all the business, then we have to cut it off, and then what? Do we move it to another night? Do we have another discussion? Just something to think about there. And I would echo what Commissioner Hanoff is saying. I would love to start it at 6:00. I think 6:00 was great tonight. I always like nights when we have work session, because I feel like I, you know, do my job, I eat something quick, and I come right here. There's not that gap. And I don't know about anybody else, but about any time after 6:00, I'm about ready to put my pajamas on and get comfortable, let alone gear up to come to a meeting at 7:00. So if there's a way, or if anybody else is interested in that, I would love to see if we can accommodate moving it up, and then maybe think about a different time for a work session if 5:00 doesn't work, which would be hard. I get that. A lot of us all have other jobs and other commitments, that it would be nice just to have that little bit of a buffer to between. But that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I do think 6:00 would be the earliest I'd like to see a meeting start. I just want to make sure that we're giving everybody enough time, or citizens enough time, especially with families, to get home, grab a bite to eat, and then if they want to come to the meeting, have a chance to get here. My only, and I've mentioned this before, my concern about having work sessions at noon is if we do have to have staff here for a work session at noon, then we're taking their lunch hour to, to have a work session, and also anybody else that would like to try to make it then, too. So that, that concerns me a little bit. So if staff has to be here, then do they just take a later lunch, or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think most of the staff that come are, you know, salaried staff, so they can flex their lunch hour. The one that really would be most encumbered would be Dwayne, actually, because, you know, he's videotaping, so he would have the less, the least amount of flexibility. But it also provides kind of a unique opportunity as well if we have someone who has an expertise, we can get them here without paying overtime. So, you know, if we're talking about trees come to mind, we could have our arborist here without, you know, we typically always have the department head or the salaried staff, so there's that, too. But I'm, I don't, I'm not, I'm not wild about a noon work session either, but there is, you know, maybe it's a 4:00 work session. But it's all to who's on the board. That makes a big difference. You know, if everyone's can be flexible, many of you can be flexible, but if we get four or five commissioners that work in manufacturing, they can't leave at noon for a work session. So, and that's partially why we didn't put that into the code initially, so we could have flexibility. But I also don't want to confuse people by jumping around too much in terms of the timing.
Right.
And you can think about it, too, and talk to the community. I mean, most of our work sessions, unless it's a hot topic, have been attended by folks like Charlie and Nancy, and, you know, so we could talk to those people as well and see what their thoughts are.
And that would be my concern, is it exactly what you just said, to echo that. If it's a hot topic, then people would want to be here. I would just want to make sure that we're being mindful of people that have a day job, that maybe can't leave early, if it's a hot topic, to come in and actually talk to us, give us input.
And I'd just throw out for you guys, too, when you're thinking about how to adjust the regular meeting, it isn't essential that the work session appear in the actual ordinance, because we treat it like a special meeting. We don't take action. We notice it up like a special meeting, but the statutes only require that the regular meetings be set by ordinance if we don't use the default in the statutes, which is the first, one meeting a month, the first Monday of every month. And obviously, we have need to get together more often than that. So the regular meeting needs to be adjusted in the statute, and we can, you know, while we're at the discussion, we can adjust how and when we do our work sessions. But for purposes of amending the ordinance, it's not essential.
And I would say, too, you know, work sessions aren't formal meetings. Not that anything would stop anybody from bringing their supper and eating it, I guess, during the meeting. But that could be an opportunity, too. I guess I was just thinking about if we do have it over lunch, then maybe people could do a lunch and learn, or, you know, we call them work sessions, but like a lunch and learn type of format, I guess, if needed.
You'd have to ask Dwayne Kendall if we could change the rules, because we're not supposed to eat or drink here.
I've seen food and drink in here.
Yes, I've seen it, too.
It's water, but...
Yeah. I've seen it, too. We have bent the rules from time to time, but, yeah, we can talk about that as well.
And I know we actually have had food in here for budget meetings, too. So, just saying.
Self-reporting. So, yes, I'd like more, more feedback, and you guys can email us and let us know more feedback. If you have, think of something about work sessions that you want us to be cognizant of. We won't probably include the language of work session in a, in the ordinance, but we want to make sure we're, have a good understanding of what you'd like. And I think 6:00 is a fair time to recommend to change. And we probably not, we wait to do that until the first of the year, so that we can communicate with people and make, let sure they, they know. And Dwayne can help communicate with the folks that watch it on the PEG channel and all those types of things, so.
I did just look, and the school district has their meeting on the second and fourth Monday, or they just have one meeting a month, but it's the second Monday of the month.
Oh, so they do meet the same time.
It might be nice to...
Is it 5:00 or 5:30, Ross?
Let me look. They begin at 5:00 PM.
So if it's 6:00, you could probably, the public could probably have an opportunity to attend both, although, at least for their public appearances, if they need to. Okay. Section 234, if we're ready to move forward, is a rewrite, because I just don't understand what it's trying to say. And I think we also need to consider attendance via technology. I don't want to get back into that like we did in COVID, but if we have to, and going forward in future generations, I think all public meetings could look a lot different with the use of technology. So Ross, maybe you could tell me what this is trying to say, and then we can ask the commission how they want us to say it. So I guess I understand everything before the comma, but after the comma, I'm a little bit confused.
I think it is worded a little goofy, and there's a specific statute right on point. I think the need for an ordinance in this subject is sort of, it's unnecessary. It's, I mean, the statute tells us what's a quorum, and that's what we follow. But at the very least, if we're going to amend this, we should just copy and paste the language directly from the statute regarding a commissioner form of government with the city manager. And it's basically a majority. basically, a majority makes a quorum. And if you fall less than a quorum, you have to adjourn the meeting. So that's why a smaller number adjourns, because if you can't field a quorum, you can't conduct the public's business.
So when the saying compel the attendance of absent members, would that mean we, you know, all jump in the city van and go pick Mason up wherever he is, or what?
Straight out of statute, but not clarified. So, in theory, okay, so there also is a statute that says, "The commission may set a punishment for members of the board who fail to attend under a policy of attendance." And you guys can vote the ouster of each other if you do not meet those minimum requirements. So it might be muscles to be flexed if we had some problems, but we have been blessed with good commissioners that tend to show up for meetings when they're elected to do the public's work. And I think it relates to that. It's the enforcement of the attendance policies you impose on each other yourselves. But you by law must adjourn if you fall below a quorum.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I wish I had better clarity. That's language borrowed from unclear statutes.
So I think, then I would recommend we go with what statute says and copy that in that area.
Correct.
Did a microphone come on?
Ross, if there's even, I'm talking about our park board, I think we have six appointed members plus the liaison. Liaison does not vote. So if you have only three or six show up, does half count as a quorum?
Okay, so, no, and that's okay. And that's a fun philosophical discussion. Not having read it, this is off the cuff, so take that for what it's worth. But I would say, voting members make your quorum, because you need to have a majority of people who can vote to be able to express the will of the board. And by statute, at least, to the extent that the voting group acts, it only acts by majority. So what that also means, just so you guys are aware, in like the corporate world, you can have a quorum to hold your meeting, and then a majority of the people there can pass the business. That's not the case for the city commission. You may only have a major, just a minimum number to have a quorum, a minimum majority. But when you want to pass actions of the board, you have to have everybody vote. And everybody has to pass it unanimously, because you still need to pass with a majority. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I still don't understand. Is three a majority on the parks board?
There's express statutes regarding parks advisory boards. I'll have to look, but I would assume the same rules would apply. So if you have a five-member voting board, you'd need three in attendance.
Yeah, we have six, and quite often, we have three, because we have two that kind of chronically don't make it.
Sure.
And then a lot of times, one other person doesn't make it. So we many times have three people, not counting me.
Of a six-member board. Yeah, that makes an interesting current question, doesn't it?
Well, I was just going to say, if, I know it's the city policy not to have commission liaisons vote in these subcommittees or these boards, but that would solve the problem.
It would. Yeah, I agree. We should think about that.
We're going to keep going just here for the sake of time. We just want to get enough feedback so we can get a draft to you. The section that's 235 is preparation of the agenda. We're pretty confident that the finance officer, which is what we call her, but in statute, she's either called the auditor or the treasurer, is legally the person required by state statute who is the keeper of the agenda. Is that correct, Ross?
That is what is in our ordinances, but by statute, it appears that it's just not clear. I don't think there's an obligation to publish an agenda.
So here's how it works in practice, then, and the commission can decide what they want to do. In practice, we kind of know the cycle of what's coming up on city business and what's been brought forward and what you're working on. And so on a Tuesday at our staff meeting, we pass out a draft agenda, and we consult with all the departments and say, what's coming up, timing-wise, what do you need on the agenda? And they give us input. And some things there, you know, have to happen at certain times because of grant deadlines and things of that nature. Dave's things can be time-sensitive because they have to have go through the zoning and then the city commission. And there's so many days of a notice of public hearing and all those things. And then I take that information, and Lisa always has licenses and warrants, and so she and I jointly together work through Gene, and that's how the agenda comes together. The finance officer, and our code has always technically been the overseer of that. We send it out to you and to the department heads on Wednesday to say, hey, what are we missing? What do we need? I think that if it wasn't set in state code, it was probably put there as a little bit of a pulling back the reins of the city manager. So I just don't go, no, we're not doing that. No, we're not doing this. You know, so you guys have another avenue to get on, you know, get things onto the agenda or work through the agenda. Now, things, it's been really easy because we've all had good communication, and it's been real, people have been really understanding, like, well, we can't just put something on the agenda if we have no idea what you want or no research or no idea to make a recommendation. People have been understanding that conversation. And, well, at least Al and I have both had that conversation with the public and with staff and with commissioners. But, you know, so that's why I think that's probably in there if it's not regulated by statute. But we can leave it like that. You can make it the city manager.
Comment I have about the agenda, and when I was orientating as a commissioner, I was told that you need multiple commissioners before you can get something on the agenda, which was never the way it was for me on the county commission. One commissioner could get something on the agenda. I don't think it's in statute, Ross, that you have to have multiple commissioners. I wish a commissioner feels, you know, it's necessary, could get an item on the agenda without, you know, necessarily getting multiple commissioners to go along with it. One other thing, I've noticed, looking at the Class A city agendas around the state, almost all of them that I've come across, at the start of the meeting, they actually approve the agenda. And so does our school board and our county commission. Something we've never done, at least as long as I've been paying attention. And I like that because, you know, things can come up where a commissioner might say, this is something we want to table. And so that's what you do when you approve the agenda, you make adjustments. I don't know if that's in statute. I don't think it is, but...
I'll let other commissioners speak to, but I have some thoughts. I just don't want it to appear as though I'm telling you guys what to do. So I'm happy to...
I do have a question about that comment. So how does that work? Is it, do you need to have more than one commissioner?
That's how we've operated in practice, that, you know, because just as, just to be, you know, really fair with everyone, just as I need limitations and Lisa needs limitations, you know, you don't want one commissioner filling up the agenda with things to either, you know, slow the process down or, you know, put things that they're just interested in. Now, we've never had that. We've been really lucky. Could that happen? Yeah. So we've always said, you know, it would be nice to know that you have other people interested in this, or bring it up under other business. And if you do have other people interested, then we'll put it on the agenda, make sure that it's not just someone's personal interest or agenda. Or I've heard of folks in other communities where they just line up the agenda with things to not get to something they don't want or to...
Filibuster.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily have enough time under other business, Al, to make your case.
Sure. Yeah, so I have some, I don't know the history of why we do it that way. It's been that way as long as I've been city attorney, and probably that way as long as Amy has been city manager. Philosophically, it's made sense because we operate under a, it's not by ordinance that we do this, but we operate under a Roberts Rule sort of procedure that, in order to bring the discussion to the floor, you need a motion and then a second. And the second is basically another commissioner saying, yeah, let's talk about that. So that's also the framework by which, by statute, we call a special meeting. It is, it's in the commissioner form of government that to call a special meeting, you would, you have to have either the mayor or two commissioners to call the special meeting for a specific given purpose, which is in alignment with that general philosophy, that at least two people should want to talk about it before you guys all spend your time and effort and staff. And the biggest thing is, with a city the size of Yankton, with enough moving parts in the machine, there is never something that comes before the commission that doesn't require some amount of staff time to let everybody know what's going on. You know, there's at least some kind of primitive memo that would need to be thrown together to orient everybody as to what that discussion is about. Just having it as a line item on an agenda just doesn't seem fair to you guys, and it doesn't seem fair to the public generally. To Brian's point, I don't have any heartburn under the Roberts Rules, the general procedure in like a corporate environment, is that, yeah, your agenda would have, is everybody good with what we're talking about? Okay, let's do this and stick to schedule. And that makes logical sense. But as a city attorney, I get very concerned because on the agenda, you cannot add things. You can only subtract as a public body. And subtracting sometimes makes sense. And we've done that in the context of something's not ready. So in the initial opening comments, we'll say, you know, we pulled something off for whatever reason. Every now and then, we have to do that. It seems to me, in Roberts Rules, it's a formality that I'm not sure provides a ton of benefit. What I don't want is if we were going to use that procedure, that it give the impression as though we can add things. And quite frankly, from a legal standpoint, because I really worry about open meeting rules and the fact that violation is technically a criminal activity, you know, I've actually pitched out to staff that we ought to consider adjusting our ordinance relating to the lineup of the agenda, just to remove that other business function, and just make sure that we have communication amongst the commissioners, that we get two commissioners that want something on the agenda informally through email. But that's up to you guys to decide. I don't think that's been abused in any way, but that's just kind of a personal, how to keep everybody out of trouble.
Not to interrupt Ross, but I'm going to interrupt Ross, because while you're talking about that, peek at 236, that's the next one there, which is the format of the agenda. And so our recommendation there is to, you know, rewrite that to reflect what we actually do. We don't call it recognition of visitors, for example. Or somehow make that more reflective of how we're doing business. It's not, I don't think it's wrong, but it's just a little outdated. And then there's the question of the other business. There's the question of, you know, approving the agenda. And just because we write and bring you guys forward a draft, doesn't mean we have to put it on the commission agenda right away for you guys to approve. We can get a draft written, and you guys can comment on it, and we can bring it forward. You know, as long as we're bringing something forward by November, we could have it in place for the first of the year. So we're not in a huge rush here. It's just something we wanted to get done this year. So you can look at it and say, oh, I don't like this or that. And we can take a look at, give you some examples of other cities.
I think both Ross and Amy probably brought up this point, but just to clarify, too, of sitting on the city commission, my understanding of that, I think we all have to be cognizant. Again, you know, you pointed out that it hasn't really been an issue. But my thought here is there's nine of us serving on the city commission, which means there's nine individual thoughts, nine individual, could be agendas or things that we want to accomplish or that we've talked to people that we want to discuss. And if all nine of us keep, you know, like just without talking to anybody else, putting things on the agenda, I think it's going to get, so I think it was more in the spirit of, as they've said, is talk to your fellow commissioners. There's nothing that says you cannot talk to a fellow commissioner one-on-one outside the meeting. Find out if there's interest. Am I alone in this, in my thought of wanting to bring this forward? And if not, then yes, you know, then we'll get it on the agenda because we know there's more people interested in talking about it. But I think we can all envision if we wanted to think about what could happen if all nine of us, you know, bring up individual agenda items every meeting. And I guess that is a big stretch. But I think that that was kind of more, not necessarily the rule of the land, but more of kind of just, hey, before we spend a lot of staff time, because they're right. I mean, nothing gets on the agenda without being researched. So now, nine individual items come to the city staff. They're spending time researching nine individual items instead of doing the job of the city that we need them to do on a daily basis. Now, again, that's a big stretch, and I get it. But I think it was more the essence, from my understanding from being on the city commission meet here, is just to say, hey, is there interest in this? And if so, then yeah, let's go to the city manager, just to protect some of that. Again, it hasn't happened, but I think that's kind of the essence behind it. And to me, that makes sense, because then I know there's other people that want to talk about it prior to going into the meeting. And with nine individual thoughts, there might be something I didn't think about outside of that maybe would do that before we get into the public as well. So that was just kind of my thoughts on that. And then I was with Ross under other business. That is always an icky, sticky spot when you sit in this chair to make sure that that's done, and I get it. Other business is just to see if there's other support to bring it forward to a meeting, which in essence accomplishes that. And then the city staff would have direction to do the research as well, so.
I know. I've said no before to commissioners, and then they have gotten other commissioners to say, you know, yeah, we do want to talk about, you know, Nathan had an idea, I remember. And I said, no, I don't think we need to put that on the agenda. And he talked to whoever his fellow commissioners were at the time, and it was on the agenda. And I think it's probably something we're doing now.
Well, it may not be as persuasive as Nathan, but I think a commissioner should be able to bring something that's important. I don't think it would, I don't buy the argument it's going to clog up the agenda. I think twice in 14 months, this happened to me where I was wanting to get something on the agenda, and I didn't get it on the agenda. So that's not exactly an example of, you know, clogging it up.
I do think there'd be some benefit for you guys having, whatever the process you want, for commissioners yourselves to get something on the agenda, so the process is standardized, though. Because I don't want there to be an environment where any of you feel as though staff is trying to block your ideas. You know, that's not our role as staff. It's our job to just make the machine work the way that you guys generally want it to work. It just, I think there just needs to be sort of a structure to it that makes sense to all of you.
And at one time, there was a form that I saw, and I don't know why that came about or how it came about, but there was a form about, and I don't know if it was for public or commissioners, about how to get something on the agenda. But we have to also think about, so I don't know, we're going to decide what we're going to do here tonight, but we have to think about not being self-interested either, because the community also calls us and says, I want to be on the agenda. And we're like, we come to public appearances and see, you know, and bring your issue. Well, here's the issue. Well, okay, but, you know, I don't know what kind of action would be taken or enough information about it to know what to recommend. So it would be nice if you could, citizen, come and bring it to the community and the commission in public appearances. And then, you know, they can tell me, yeah, we should put this on the agenda, and this is critical, and we should, or, you know, we don't need to put it on the agenda. Just go talk to Amy tomorrow, and we can talk about that issue. So we have to think about them as well, because there's a process for that in place, too. So I don't know how I feel about the other business. Ross and I kind of are a little different on that, on how our viewpoints are. So I guess that's how the good political system is supposed to work, is we're not really supposed to agree on how we're doing things, but we're going to come to a consensus. So maybe we should sit on that a little bit and talk through that. I guess I could also, when I'm looking at agendas of other communities, see how they handle that portion.
I go back to, I think the good thing is that the commissioners are speaking to each other right outside of the meeting. Obviously, there's things you cannot do, and maybe, Ross, you can clear that up a little bit.
Groups of four or less, please.
Correct, correct. So, I mean, everybody, that's how you get to know each other, right? And what your personality and what your thoughts are, where you want to go in the future. You know, we have the strategic planning, so that's really the long thing. But the day-to-day, if you want to add stuff, we should always be having those communications. We could do that via email, right? So that's quick and easy. Send an email to someone, and if it gets legs, you move on with it. And if it doesn't, then figure out why, talk to another commissioner, and just kind of work through that process. And that's why we're all here. We should be talking to each other.
Right. Because you can't really get anything done without having a consensus.
Yeah, just be careful that even when you're emailing, you don't blast that to everybody.
Right.
You know, either send the same email nine times if you want, or eight times, I guess, is the case maybe. And, or in small groups of you, to just prevent accidental violations that actually become criminal activities.
And I've been on this board for, you know, six, almost six years now, and everybody's been really good about that. And sometimes mistakes are made, and then we, you know, report ourselves to the city attorney and confess.
So for the sake of just moving, getting through the major points and then seeing what you guys want to talk about, maybe we should all just kind of keep an open mind about this until we find out what other cities are doing to get things on the agenda, what they're doing in terms of other business, and we can get you some more information before we sort of make a recommendation here tonight. Because I do think there's some levity in talk, thinking about that, and thinking not just about us, but about... in talk, thinking about that, and thinking not just about us, but about the public as well.
Could I make a couple more points real quick?
Yes.
We're trying to get through this. But I just want to also say, just remember, though, that as commissioners, we're always being approached by, by citizens that are concerned. And I do agree that we can't, if we, if we just started adding things to the, to the agenda, that could go on and on and on. But, but we do, we are approached by citizens, and sometimes if we hear more than one, or, or things happen, we, we bring it forward. I think that's important. But I also want to ask about E, other routine items, the, under the consent agenda. Can you explain to me the, the two sentences exactly how that, what, what that means?
No. Maybe Ross can.
So, section, section 236, two, under E.
Other routine items, honestly, I don't, I don't know.
To me, that's other business, maybe. I don't know. Or some communities have, like, commission reports. So like, you know, they would have, just use Brian's park example, Commissioner Hunhoff stand up and say, here's a, here's some information from the parks board. I don't know if that's what it means.
Under section E about other routine items, the, the, under the consent agenda, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know that we've ever, so even some of these things that are on here, like resolutions approving Platts outside the city, we put those on regular businesses, you know, either old or new businesses, the case may be, anyway. If there's any possibility for discussion, we don't use consent agenda.
And that might have been something we had on there before we approved the ETJ. And then, once the ETJ became about, we didn't need to put those on individually, so.
I just don't know the history of it.
Okay.
We're very careful not to overuse consent agenda. If you want to talk about it, we pull it off.
If somebody has a good example from a city, I'll look at what other cities around here are doing. But if somebody has a good example that they, they like, we can model ourselves or, or improve even what they have.
Because I see now bills are under consent agenda, too.
Some people do that.
Really? Okay.
I don't know if that's a good idea, but I don't recommend that, but you guys can do that.
This is just Yankton's idea of what needs to be in each section, right?
At one point, yeah.
That's nothing that's formal in statute. So that could be cleaned up for what we actually covered, depending on what we find. Okay.
We believe that there's sort of some miss, some mistake in how this supervision of city officers, so technically, according to state statute, Lisa is, is the auditor or the treasurer. So we should probably name her as such.
We're going to go with auditor.
We're going to go with auditor, based on what, based on what the, so this, it indicates the officers that work for you are the city manager, city attorney, and the finance officer. Well, we believe that's how it's set up in state statute, that the finance officer does work directly for the elected body. But in our quote ordinance, it says, all officers except the city manager and the city attorney work for the city manager. So I don't think you want Lisa directly supervised by the city manager. I think you want her supervised by you. That's always how we operated. And until we started digging through this, we didn't realize that. That's a check and balance for the city commission. And I don't think you want, you know, the city manager over the person that has the checkbook, because there could be, I don't think our auditors would like that either. So if, we're seeing head nods on that. And you, you guys should be, you know, managing her and asking her questions and financial things, just as you do, Ross and I. So we'll clean that up.
So just so I understand, so right now, we are the only ones that are, that are overseeing Lisa? Is that what you're saying?
Well.
Directly.
Yes. However, if you read, if you read through this, our code of ordinance, technically, I think there's argument that it's written that I'm overseeing her.
One thing I'm a little bit confused on is, I think you said earlier that it's the finance officer's job by statute to prepare the agenda. I remember very early on as a commissioner, I asked Al about getting something on the agenda, and he told me that's really up to the city manager and the mayor. So I.
Yeah. So our, by our ordinance, the finance officer sets the agenda, but as long as I've been city attorney, that has not been the practical way it's been done. It's, it was basically everything gets, get, everything that needs to be on the agenda gets into Calene by Wednesday at noon. I mean, that was historically, I was afraid of that day if I didn't have it in, because, you know, hell hath no fury, like.
But what I think, once we, once we understand how we're going to put, put that process together, we need their code to reflect what we're actually doing. If it's not dictated in state statute.
Yeah, it's not.
And my thought is that it, it could have been based on the fact that most South Dakota cities don't have a city manager or that structure. But if it's not, if it's not, then my thought went to, well, they do that as a, as a control method. They put that in as a control method. So the city manager wasn't the final authorizer of the agenda. And you guys might want to think about that, both for who, who we are today and who we might be tomorrow. Maybe that's a good check and balance. Technically, I don't think it's going to change how we work, but that's something to talk to each other about.
Right now, you do it as a team, correct? You get the department's heads together. You could get a city manager that doesn't do that at all, right?
Right.
So how do you, what do you put in place so that you do have more than one person?
And that might be why, you know, we, it was written that way. And, yeah, so that could be an obstacle.
It's five to seven, Amy, so just being cognizant of time.
Sister cities, I'll be really quick. The duties of the finance officer, what we're going to call auditor acting as finance officer, are not, you know, can be, can be updated. We can compare some language. Lisa and I and Ross have talked about putting in some very general language, reflective of state statute. You can give us your comments on that. I was incorrect about the sister city advisory commission that has been used in the past. It doesn't hurt to have it there. We can take it out or leave it in. But if we ever would want one, it'd be nice to have that structure already there. The solid waste advisory committee, based on the date of that, of that ordinance, we understand now that it was probably put together when we were deciding what happens with landfill, and where do we take our trash. So we think that can be omitted. This has nothing to do with joint powers. Joint powers is between Vermillion, Clay County, Yankton County, and City of Yankton. So, and, so, so we think this can be omitted, because I think we're in that for a penny, in that for a pound. We have to stay in a relationship with the joint powers, because the state regionalized the number of landfills that can, can occur. So, no. So real quickly, sorry, I went too fast on that. If there's other areas of this code that you all feel need to be updated or investigated, we will certainly do that. Just have to let us know what they are. And we will make the changes. Or make, get you a draft to review.
Amy, is there any certain date that you would want to hear feedback from the commission by, that your kind of goal is to get this?
I think if we could get feedback in the next month for all these things, because that'll give us some time to do a little research as well, we'll probably send some emails out to you, like, hey, look at this agenda, or here's what this community does. And if you all have feedback, again, if we're looking at altering the meeting time, I would just think we'd want to take action early enough so we could say, okay, the January meeting, January, whatever the first meeting in January would be, would be conducted at this time, and we can have time to advertise that and communicate.
Perfect. We'll go with that, Ben. Any last second thought? Are you good?
I'm good. Sorry, this was one where we could have used.
Yeah, it's extra time, but we, this is, I did not plan this to be an example. But with that, there is no other business in front of the commission as tied to the work session. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session of July 22nd.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Anybody abstaining? We are adjourned for like one minute.